All right. Good evening and welcome to the first Twalton City Council meeting of two thousand twenty-two. Happy New Year all and hopefully all is well with folks. We're going to get in here in a moment about our moment of remembers of folks who've passed away from COVID nineteen. I just want to remind folks who are in a surge with the Omicron and that they need to take it seriously. Please wear masks, wash your hands, still keep this, keep a distance because this is surging through Washington County. We're all learning more and more of our friends and family who have caught it. Luckily, those folks that I know who have caught it have been vaccinated, so the symptoms are mild. But that's not happening for everyone, so we'll go ahead and kick off this meeting. I just called it to order and we'll do the pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Sacco.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I'll turn it over to Councilor Brooks for our moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. As of today, in the United States, we've lost eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand individuals. And in the state of Oregon, we've lost five thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine lives have been lost in Oregon. Currently, three thousand seven hundred and eighty-one people are infected in Washington County, which, like you said, is quite a lot compared to the numbers that we've been looking at. And these are the ones that are reported and the three-day total for today in the state was eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-eight people. So please join me. And I also want to say that over the number of people that have died are over a million people are dealing with long-term COVID and on disability and dealing with terrible things as well. So grief comes in many different ways during this time, not just loss of life, but loss of normality. And and like we all have experienced, loss of connection and person-to-person. So please join me in taking a minute to remember those that we've lost and that are still suffering due to the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks. And just to follow on to that, as some folks are aware, Durham Elementary School had closed for the rest of this week due to surge in COVID. And I know the parents in my neighborhood are very nervous about TTSD having to go into online learning here pretty soon. There's a shortage of teachers. Teachers are getting infected, subs. So please, please wear your mask, get the COVID vaccination, get a booster. If you haven't had a chance to get your children vaccinated, please do so. That this variant, as I said before, the symptoms are much milder, but it's it's still takes you out for a few days. And it's important to keep our kids in school so they continue to learn and not go back to what we were doing last year with, you know, virtual online learning where some kids struggled with that and fell a little bit behind. So with that, we'll move on to announcements. This is not the way I wanted to start the year with say, having to say goodbye to a long-term city employee who's very well-respected and well-regarded. So I'll turn this over to Sharon Lombos for recognition of our city attorney, Sean Brady, or soon to be gone city attorney and move on to bigger and better things at the state. Sherilyn.
I don't know about better, but let's.
More nightmarish. Hopefully, it's more nightmarish.
Well, it is with many mixed emotions that I start this. So I hired Sean in two thousand twelve after the retirement of Brenda Braden, our long-term city attorney. And Sean came to us from the city of Salem. And before that, had worked for the state, the Department of Justice. So as he's taking a full circle, is kind of going home. And he was just raring to go and ready to take on the job of being Twalton City Attorney. So as our sole city attorney, Sean has carried just a significantly heavy load these nine years, and he's responsible for just a ton of things. And I will say that Sean never shies away from being a resource. He never makes any of us feel like we're bothering him. And he is always up for a laugh and a smile. And he cares very much. Anytime I've had any family issues, Sean is the first to reach out and ask how my family's doing or just be concerned about about personal things. And and then he takes initiative. He has, he's identified many, many ways that we've needed to be better. And he has been involved in making the city of Twalton organization better in so many ways. His fingerprints are everywhere. He's, of course, an important valuable member of the executive team and has just shown his worth and his value many, 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 many times, hundreds and thousands of times. I would say that this last year, these last two years with COVID was a whole new level for the exec team. And Sean just was involved in subcommittees and in hours and hours of writing policies and and giving, just working on things that didn't really have legal implications. But we're just moving the organization forward. He's easy to work with. He's cheerful and funny and concerned and generous. And Twalton has been lucky and blessed to have him these last nine years. And I will personally miss him and the organization will miss him as well.
So I think I'm gonna see how should we do it? We'll have Sean have the last say here. We can, we'll start off with the proclamation read by Council President Grimes. And then if councillors would like to have some departing shots at Sean, we'll do that after that. So Council President Grimes.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm very honored to read this proclamation. It pleases me to be able to share these kind words to Sean. It also saddens me deeply that he's leaving. But let me share some wonderful laudatory things about his time here at Twalton. This is a proclamation commending Sean Brady on his service to Twalton. Whereas Sean Brady was hired as Twalton City Attorney and began his employment with the city of Twalton on September fourth, two thousand twelve. And whereas being Twalton City Attorney meant working on plan text and map amendments, intergovernmental agreements, easements, development agreements, land acquisitions, franchise agreements and contracts too numerous to count. Sean provided generous legal advice on master plans galore, including the transportation system plan, the parks recreation master plan and the sewer water and stormwater master plan. And whereas over the course of his nine-plus years at the city of Twalton, Sean worked on hundreds, if not thousands, of resolutions and ordinances. His all-time favorite list must include chickens, towing, noise, food carts, marijuana, parking, floodplain and social gaming, just to name a few. And whereas Sean was a tireless advocate for transparency and understanding, he transitioned the municipal code and the development code online in a searchable format. He believed in writing regulations in a way that could be easily explained and understood. He advised and supported elected officials and staff on public records, public meetings, public contracting, legislative changes and other often mundane but incredibly important and impactful issues. And whereas, besides dispensing on-demand legal advice to the council, the Development Commission and the entire organization, Sean worked on big projects and efforts, including the Development Code Update and Improvement Project, Twalton twenty-fourty, the Comprehensive Plan, Urban Renewal, the Council Rules, the Basalt Creek Concept Plan and Response Efforts Associated with the COVID-nineteen Pandemic, among many others. He provided wise counsel and guidance on elections, including the two city charter amendments with a third coming up on the May twenty-twenty-two ballot. And he represented the city in multiple appeals and court cases over the years. And whereas, even though Sean carried an incredibly heavy workload in Twalton, he was always welcoming and available to talk and share a laugh. He will be greatly missed as the all-around great guy that he is. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Twalton, Oregon, that Sean Brady is thanked, commended and applauded for his service and significant contributions to the city of Twalton, introduced and adopted this tenth day of January, twenty twenty-two. And thank you so much, Sean, for everything, all your wise counsel for being so wonderful to all of us, answering our questions, supporting us, helping us with chickens, among other things. It's, it's been an absolute honor to work with you these nine years and I wish you the best. And the state and the Department of Justice is very lucky to get you. But don't forget us. Come back, visit us. And good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Any other councillors who would like to have some greens or thanks for Sean? Council Pratt?
Noticed in this thing, Sean, that I've worked with attorneys my whole career. And I think it's a real skill to be able to write regulations and legal documents in a way that us laypeople can understand. And you've really got that skill and I'm really impressed with that. And the other skill I think you should get an award for is you have the best poker face when we do things like we don't know how to say if it's an ordinance or in my case, if it's an ex parte communication with the land use. So I'm a little nervous about our next land use issue when you're not here, but I've got my council rules ready and I will read them. Just thank you so much for your patience with myself and all of council and helping us learn what we're supposed to be doing correctly.
Thank you.
Other councillors. Councilor Brooks.
I did pipe up earlier, but I want to officially be on here and say best of luck. And it's a hard way for me to start the new year, but I hope it's a wonderful next chapter for you, Sean. You've definitely made this chapter for me at City Council much more enjoyable and also made me feel safer that I know how to follow the rules. And I have somebody that explains legal needs, ideas, policies, concepts to me in ways that I can understand. And like others have said, always bringing such a great attitude, sense of service and generous humor, sense of humor and even your goodbye is, I imagine you might be wanting to watch the football championships. But here you are with us saying goodbye in an evening meeting. So I hope that Salem treats you well. And if they don't, come back. Thank you.
Councilor Hillier.
Thank you. It's a pretty boring game, so this is way more exciting. So not that I can tell. Anyway, I'd like to just say thank you, Sean. It's, you know, I kind of know the ways of attorneys for other reasons. And and I got a kick out of in my very short time getting to work with you at this level. When I called and I said, do you want to know what I know? And you closed your door and I thought, oh, you know what? Okay, I wish I was not on a Zoom call on that one or whatever. But anyway, I felt a lot better knowing that you were at least heard what I had to say. And I appreciated you taking the time for to to ease my anxiety over several different issues. And I just wanted to say thank you. I do wish you the best. I know how careers move around and we all appreciate that. And we, we, not that we hope it goes poorly, but I agree with Councilor Brooks. We do hope that that you'll just come back or you'll you'll raise up the next generation of attorneys and send them to us, whatever works best for you.
Councilor Sacco.
Well, our time together has been short, a year, almost to the day. But I do want to say thank you for taking the time to teach us so much, even that short period of time during our sessions where you have, you know, broken down really complex complex topics to have to teach us in a short amount of time. And you you did that so efficiently and broke these topics down that we could then become, you know, many experts in them. And I really appreciate that. And you did that very well. And I'm just sad we don't have more time together, but thank you so much for serving Twalton well.
Thank you.
Is that everyone? I think so. I've just got a few things here, Sean. You can't see it, but you'll remember over my right shoulder is some of the art that you and I sat next to each other during a council retreat. And the art is there. And I actually pull out my cupboard today, the glass I painted. One side of the glass is the Twalton City logo. The other side is a portrait of Sean. So we had, you know, we had quite a few laughs at some of the retreats and I appreciate that with you. I also appreciate how you put, you did put humor in some of your presentations. You, some of your pictures or some of the stuff like that, you made, you know, the legal mumbo jumbo very approachable and easier to understand, especially with your sense of humor in your presentations. I also, I always appreciated how fast you got back to me on an email or a call. Even in the evenings, you would do it sometimes on the weekends. That was outstanding in my mind. I remember how many times we meet, the council rules, where it was yourself, myself, Joelle Davis and Robert Kellogg. And you playing referee between the three of us, trying to get agreement on some of the things on the council rules. And that, that was like, what, three months worth of meetings at least? And then, you know, finally adopting them. And the thing that I was always going to stick in my mind for you is when I reached out to you with the mobile home park, it was possibly going to evict the residents of the mobile home park, mobile home park during COVID. And you were Johnny on the spot with why they couldn't do it and connecting family promise with the group of attorneys who helped folks out like that down at Believe It on Eugene. And it prevented all but one of them from being evicted. So your help was critical in making that happen and and helping some folks who have some beforeability issues with a home and might have been evicted, you know, during COVID. So I will always remember about that. You get, and that was over a weekend that you got back to me, jumped through hoops and we got it done. And I very much appreciate that. So with that, over to you, Sean.
Well, thank you all for your kind words. I really appreciate everything that you've said tonight. It's been a true honor. I'll probably get emotional here. It's been a true honor to serve as a Twalton City Attorney. I've really enjoyed working with all of you and with with the city staff, with the executive team, with Sherilyn. It's been a wonderful nine years for me. Twalton's always had a special place in my heart. My wife and I first lived together when we were first married here. Our kids were born here. And then my nine years in as a career. So I look really, I look forward to seeing what Twalton holds in its future. I believe its future is bright. And I greatly want to say that I appreciate all of your service to the city of Twalton as well. I get paid to do this, whereas you do not. And you're the ones making the tough decisions, wrestling with the difficult topics. And I commend you for, in this day and age, just being willing to serve. And I very much appreciate having the opportunity to serve at the city of Twalton. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. You would be very much missed. And again, best wishes on your new position at the state. Keep in touch. You know, there's not many people that can talk about the Mets and Islanders in this area. So now I've lost one Met buddy. All right. Thank you again. Anything else for Sean? All right. So we'll continue on. So you probably can get back to the game. So that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting who would like to discuss something with the council, this is the time to do so. Do we have anyone at the Pulse Center base?
No one at the Pulse Center, Mayor, and I have not heard from anyone in the meeting yet.
All right. I'll give people a few seconds. If you'd like to have some citizen comment, this is the time to do so. You can just unmute yourself and announce that you'd like to say something. Seeing none, I'll then move on to the consent agenda. The consent, the consent agenda, are those items considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like them removed and heard separately later tonight? The consent agenda tonight consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. And item number two, consideration of resolution number five-five-nine-one dash two-two, accepting Bureau of Justice Assistance, BJA, of the Office of Justice Programs, OJP, U.S. Department of Justice, DOJ, enough acronyms here, and Justice and Security Strategies, JSS, grant funds and appropriate specific purpose revenue in the city's general fund during fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. Are there any of these two items that someone would like to have removed and discussed later?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second to accept the consent agenda as read and discussion on the motion. Councilor Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt. Councilor Brooks.
Aye.
Councilor Sacco.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye also. Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, consideration of resolution number five-five-eight-eight dash twenty-two, authorizing changes to fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two adopted budget. And there's Mr. Hudson. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'm Don Hudson, the Assistant City Manager. And first, I want to say a lot of thanks to Sean before I get started on this. It's a great nine years. I've done everything I can to try to get him to stay. I tried to withhold his last paycheck. I tried a number of other things and he hasn't bought off on any of that yet. So but I do want to say it was a, I really appreciate everything Sean has done for me, for the city. And I know I'll see him in a couple of weeks when we, when hopefully my gales beat his pilots up in Portland. We're going to go to the game together. And hopefully we'll see if that happens. I was hoping this would be Sean's last resolution on, but I see there's one more on your agenda tonight. Though I do got to say, he did make a few minor changes to it after I turned it in. So I think that was his final parting gift to me. So anyway, here what I'm here for is the public hearing this evening related to the supplemental budget. The, we receive both vehicle license fees from both Washington County and Clackamas County. And it was determined when these started up that we would use these for the pavement maintenance program. Because they are not road utility fees, we actually record those revenues in the road operating fund. And then we do a transfer from the road operating fund to the road utility fund for that program. During our year-end close process this year and after June thirtieth, we received our, pursued our final revenues from both counties. And we actually, the good news was we received more revenues than we had budgeted. Because of that transfer is budgeted, we are not able to do the full transfer in the, that fiscal year because we didn't have that budget capacity. So we determined that we would hold it over and do the budget transfer changes, budget transfer in this fiscal year, and that's a portion of this supplemental budget. The second part of it is in looking at our accounts, we realized that back when these revenues first started, we had not done that transfer from road utility, road operating to road utility for the revenues we received in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. So we want to be able to move those revenues over as well into road utility fund for the pavement maintenance program. At that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Don. All right. To be honest, this is not an ordinance where we can make Sean come with someone extraordinary long ballot title or whatever. So it wears them out. But this is a resolution. So do I have a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve resolution number five-five-eight-eight dash twenty-two, authorizing changes to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two adopted budget.
And I'll second that. Thank you, Councilor Brooks.
Have a motion and second.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. Before we get to the motion, because it's a public hearing, chances that there are probably not too many people out there willing, wanting to testify, but we have to have that opportunity. So.
Yeah, I was seeing you were paying attention. See if you were looking at the clock there. Thank you for pointing that out, Sean. Is there any member of the community who is attending this meeting who would like to state their opposition or support for this resolution? All right. Seeing none. Can we now proceed, Mr. Brady? So I have a motion and second to adopt resolution five-five-nine-zero dash twenty-two. Any discussion on the motions? All right, Councilor Hillier.
Aye. Five-five-eight-eight dash twenty-two.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the next slide. You're correct. Thank you. Five-five-eight-eight dash twenty-two. So I'm trying to trick up, you know, Sean here. So yes, so approval of resolution number five-five-eight-eight dash twenty-two. Thank you, Council Pratt. Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Do you see how much we need you, Sean? You're going to leave us. I vote aye.
I vote aye also. Thank you. So moving on to general business. Item number one, consideration of resolution number five-five-nine-zero dash twenty-two, awarding the contract for the Climate Action Plan to the Good Company. And I see Nick just popped up. And there's Maddie.
Yeah, so Nick and Maddie, Nick Westendorf and Matty Cheek are our co-project managers on this. And they will start the presentation. And we have representatives from the Good Company here as well.
Thanks, Sherilyn. Mayor Council, good to see you again. Happy to be here for Sean's final, final resolution this evening to consider awarding a contract to Good Company. And we also have Jessica on the line as well, Jayla. She's our project manager for community engagement. So excited to bring this here. It's been a long time coming. We've met a few times throughout scoping. So we're finally getting to the point where this is going to take ground. So I'm going to let Maddie take it from here. She has done. I'm going to let Maddie take it from here. She has done the bulk of the work up to this point. So she will do the presentation, and then we will all be available to field questions and comments. All right, Maddie, let me share my screen. This should go smoother than the dry run, hopefully. And here we go.
All right. Well, thank you for having us. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matty Cheek, and I'm a management analyst one in our public works department. And as Sherilyn said, I'm co-leading our climate action planning process along with Nick. The purpose of my presentation today is to provide you all with a progress update on our climate action plan and request approval for Sherilyn to execute a contract worth two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for this project. Next slide, please. So here's a quick overview of my presentation today. I will take a look back at our climate action planning journey so far. I'll talk a little bit about the consultant selection process and share some information about our consultant team. After that, I'll dive into the proposed scope, project timeline, and project costs before discussing next steps and opening it up for questions and comments. Next slide, please. So for a few years now, the council has included a vision statement related to an environmentally active and responsible community in the Twalton twenty thirty vision. And in December twenty twenty, council identified the development of a climate action plan as a priority for the city. Staff began researching and scoping for a climate action plan and returned to council in April twenty twenty one with an update. After receiving further direction from council, staff wrote and issued a request for proposals during the summer of last year. We received eight proposals by the, by the time the deadline passed in September. Proposals were reviewed and a finalist was selected in fall of last year, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. And here we are today, seeking council approval to proceed with the consultant contract. Next slide, please. So the consultant selection process was split into two phases. Phase one included individual review and scoring of written proposals by our Climate Action Plan Steering Committee. This is a group made up of representatives from across city departments, as well as Counselor Pratt and Counselor Brooks. Each steering committee member read and scored each proposal, allowing us to average the scores and rank the proposals. We met again in October to discuss scoring and decided to further consider the top four firms during the next phase of selection, which brings us to phase two. Phase two included reference checks and interviews with each of the top four proposers. I completed all the reference checks and a panel consisting of myself, Nick, Sherilyn, and Counselor Pratt conducted the interviews. This panel met again once all the interviews were complete to discuss and decide on our top choice. Next slide, please. We selected Good Company as our top firm for this project. They're a Eugene-based firm with a significant amount of climate action, action planning experience. They've conducted over two hundred, two hundred, excuse me, greenhouse gas emissions inventories and drafted over ten municipal climate action plans, including the city of Beaverton and the city of Milwaukee's plans. Good Company will partner with three other firms to assist with the community engagement and geospatial analysis portions of the plan. So JLA and ISO are both Portland-area public involvement firms with a wealth of experience conducting robust and dynamic community engagement. And ISO specializes in outreach with the Latino community. Additionally, planning communities will help us to, to apply an equity lens to our climate work by mapping out climate hazards and overlaying those on top of demographic data. Next slide, please. So key deliverables from the consultant team will include, first and foremost, a greenhouse gas emissions inventory report and supporting documentation. This piece is really important because it will help us to understand where our carbon emissions are coming from and how much we're currently emitting. Both of these are key pieces for us to know as we seek to measure the impact of our climate action planning efforts over time. Second, the consultant team will produce educational materials for staff, stakeholders, and community members. These materials will be instrumental to ensure that everyone has a baseline understanding of how climate science works and what climate impacts will look like here in Twalton as we continue to experience the effects of climate change. Bringing everyone up to speed from the outset will ensure that we can have more productive conversations about mitigation, adaptation, and sequestration as we work through this climate action planning process and move into implementation of the plan in the future. The city will also benefit from a comprehensive public involvement and communications plan. This plan will include bilingual outreach materials and a dynamic project website, as well as public engagement summaries following online and in-person events and workshops. These will be conducted with stakeholders, including representatives from industry, small businesses, households, and youth. We expect to experience the added benefit of increased staff capacity as we learn from the experts at JLA and ISO about how to conduct meaningful engagement around climate action in Twalton. We will also receive communications and graphic design support to ensure that we're communicating with the public about this project in an intentional and engaging way. At the end of this process, we will, of course, receive a graphics-rich climate action plan. As I'm sure you're, you're all aware, planning documents in general can be a little bit dry. So our goal is to produce a graphics-rich plan that is engaging and actionable to ensure that the plan is accessible to various audiences, including community members and staff. Next slide, please. Good Company estimates that it will take fourteen months to both conduct a comprehensive greenhouse gas emissions inventory and draft a community climate action plan that includes mitigation, adaptation, and sequestration strategies and actions. The guiding principles of equity, community benefits, and partnership will underlie our community, community engagement efforts, which will be foundational to drafting a plan that reflects the voices and lived experiences of the Twalton community. So we can expect to have a completed greenhouse gas emissions inventory by the end of this summer and a draft plan for review in the spring of twenty twenty three. Next slide. So this project has currently scoped, is expected to cost two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and I'll break down the costs on the next slide. Thank you. We expect to spend roughly half of this amount on community and stakeholder engagement efforts, followed by eighteen percent on project management, fifteen percent on plan compilation and review, eleven percent on the emissions inventory, and seven percent on the production of education materials. So when I started working here in June of twenty twenty one, one of the first things I learned and loved about Twalton is that the city council is intent on ensuring that the climate action planning process involves the community and stakeholders in a meaningful way. As you know, ensuring that the plan is influenced by and for the people of Twalton will go a long way towards fostering community buy-in in the long run, which is critical to ensuring that this plan achieves its goals. Our consultant team exceeded our expectations in scoping the community engagement portions of this plan to ensure that engagement is equitable, thoughtful, and accessible to community members. And spending forty nine percent of our project budget on community engagement efforts demonstrates the city's commitment to ensuring that the plan reflects the values of the Twalton community. Next slide. So our next steps include executing the contract with Good Company, scheduling a project kickoff meeting, and continued work on the project for fourteen months with updates to council and the Twalton community in the meantime. Next slide. So before I wrap up my presentation, I'd like to bring us back to our recommendation to council today. We recommend that council approve resolution number five, five, nine, zero dash two, two, awarding a contract for Twalton's climate action plan to Good Company. Next slide. Thank you all for your time this evening, and I'd like to open it up for questions and comments now.
Sorry, the stop shot was in, okay, there we go.
All right.
And windows, behind windows.
Questions for Nick and or Maddie. Counsel Brooks.
Okay, well, first of all, I just want to say Happy New Year, and this is my ideal way of kicking off twenty twenty two. So thank you for all of your work and welcome to the Good Company, folks. To our meeting today, I had a, a kind of brass tacks question about, I remember when we made the decision to measure carbon, and I think it's really important to understand how well we do and, and to understand where it's coming from. And I also recognize that we're in a moment during the pandemic that those measures may be less robust. So we may have differences as time goes by. And I'm just curious if there's places to, you know, as things change, and I don't know if people are going to make different decisions about driving and all that, but how do we mitigate for that particular condition that we're finding ourselves in today?
Go for it, Josh.
Thank you. Thanks for that great question, and I'm delighted to hear you say this is your ideal way to kick off the new year. Not married. Many people say facing climate change is my ideal new year. So thank you. The only place that's noticeable on this is commuting by professionals. And right now, we have suppressed commuter numbers, and the place you'd see that is in total consumption of fuel when we get fuel tax data for your area. So we can adjust for it, and we could even estimate where we think it's going. I will say that that big COVID lesson of video meetings was a whopper change in the thinking of transportation planners because of programming and how many folks are going to be on the road. But when it gets back to the vehicles, we've got the same challenges. So we may have fewer vehicles on the road going to professional environments. But all of that will be found in your inventory and identified to, to what those things are. Later, we'll also pick out strategies to approach mitigating those emissions. And we will start with the most proven, sorry, with the most scale that's proven and has least cost and least transition and work towards most expensive and most difficult. So we always want to go high bank for the buck upfront and get quick stuff done wherever possible, and then dig in on the slow stuff later. But those kind of temporary effects are very visible to us in the data, and we'll be able to manage it.
Thank you very much. And yeah, as I was looking at that, I'm like, things have changed since twenty twenty when we were discussing that and meeting in person and all kinds of things like that. So I just also want to say, I, you know, I, I don't know how people can't really face climate change with the things that we've faced, and I've talked about it before. We have cert here for, and a lot of times we talk about the Cascadia abduction, but they've really come and helped the community when there's been big storms and when there's been impacts from that is hard for our city to manage because of climate change. So I think that I said it earlier in the, in the, in the work session that denial is not where I want to be. I want to be in a place where we can make the best decisions moving forward to help our city be as thriving, healthy as we can. And I will say too that I have talked to people across the state around consultants and have heard very good things about your organization, the Good Company. So that also gives me strength and confidence in a positive reputation that you have with people that are interested in environmental work across the, the state. So thank you. And I'm looking forward to having, hearing what the other counselors have to say.
May I just thank you for thanking us? Really, the thing that you did that's special, two things. One is you called our clients and asked them what it was like to work with us. No other competitive bid has ever yet checked with the actual cities that worked with the consultants. They've awarded strictly on the paper. So that is something I want to thank you for because reputation and ease of work matters. I, the rest I can share later, but thank you. That's a really big thing that's unique that I haven't seen any other city do, and it's the way you get somebody that's going to take care of you. So thank you.
Counsel Pratt.
Thank you. I want to start with, when I was first on council, my first, our last in-person retreat, we had to put some goals out and Counsel Brooks and I were sitting together, and she threw it out there. I'm like, yes. But so that's what was the impetus for all this. And then it's moved forward and Maddie, she's done a great job, and Nick of leading this process and asking some great questions, and Sherilyn for taking the time and what Maddie said was correct. We, we came to the conclusion that there were a couple of companies that could do a fine job on the greenhouse gas emissions, but we thought it was so important that we have that community interaction, involvement, and outreach, because that's what we're about in this city. And also, well, you should look at some of their end products. I know that the city of Milwaukee, I talked with the mayor and Counsel Heisey about you guys, and they're kind of like we were talking about with Sean. If you look at what they've got on the website, it's, it's really graphically friendly and easy to read and makes it great end product for our community. So I'm really looking forward to where we end up with this. Thank you all for joining us.
Other comments, questions? Counsel Sacco.
And thank you very much for working with us. I'm really excited. I'm really excited for our climate action plan. I do have a, a question regarding the the action items that I'm seeing on the timeline. So we do have the greenhouse gas admissions inventory, wrap-up review and draft plan. I'm wondering, you know, this is really centered around admissions. Are there any other topics that are going to go into this climate action plan as far as your role plays in this climate action plan, and what are those?
So what I should do is I should talk about that technical piece, and then I should hand it over to Jessica, who's going to do the public engagement with ISO. So, so there's kind of two big pieces. And when you think about climate change, there's kind of, you should always sort into two buckets right away. One is emissions and reducing them. And the short version is you can reduce them faster than you can try and make them go away with trees, but that's a much longer story later. Right? So reducing emissions through technology changes and behavior changes. And then there's resilience or adaptation saying, okay, we are.
We've had technical difficulty here for Josh.
Josh has a thing with his Zoom account where it automatically mutes him. So it sounds like we've got you back.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
The oil companies are shutting them down.
I have no idea why this started, but like a week ago, it just randomly says I'm muted and there's no button. I'm sorry. So in adaptation, it's the things that we think of like fires and floods and landslides. And all these phenomenon are known to us. We just haven't seen them at the scale or intensity or frequency. So what we try and do is paint that picture of tomorrow clearly, and then let the people that are experts in their jobs that have either the problem or the solution say, oh, yes, okay, when we're flooding and we're going to flood more often, I know that that's at these four intersections. Right? So those intersections are going to have to be redesigned, put into the capital improvement program. So that's like one pathway towards action, fixing stuff so we can deal with smoke or flood or whatever it is. And then that mitigation side is can we switch to renewable energy? Can we get more EVs? Can we do more energy efficiency? So there's kind of these two big worlds that we're going to put down in this plan, and we're going to describe your path forward. And one of the things that's really important to say here is DQ has done a lot of opinion research on climate change. And people almost spend no time thinking about it because they don't believe they can do anything. So the whole point of this process is to tell people where can you act? So you don't just retreat and let it happen. So that's a, a key thing here is giving everybody a to-do list. It's, it's not a ton of rocket scientist is, science is just a ton of process and making sure that we're careful and that we're accounting for things and then doing really good planning with people so that we can move forward on those, that, that list. Is that helpful? Okay, Jessica, you want to share a little bit?
I'll just add that a lot of that's also going to be informed by reaching out to community members to understand what their lived experiences.
reaching out to community members to understand what their lived experiences are like. A lot of that work is going to be done by Izzo. And just understand, really getting a sense from them to make sure that those items that Joshua's just talking about, like what are the things that you can do that that actually makes sense for the community members in Tuolton? Or are there other things that are really creative that we haven't talked about? So, as we're working through this process with the public, we want some like big creative ideas, but we also want to set expectations pretty clearly. And I think part of that is going to be really trying to like pull out some of those like personal stories. Like how are people, how do they move around the city? How do they, what do they do at their jobs? What are their daily lives like? So, that way, when we start talking about mitigation options, it feels true to them and realistic. Does that help?
I've got a great example of that from Ben that isn't, isn't necessarily like person-based. It's culture-based. So, when we worked with them, the, the general community was not believing that EVs were real. And I, and I keep saying like, where are you guys at? Like how, you're late to the party. Well, we finally got ahold of the transportation planners. Sixty-seven percent of all personal vehicles are pickup trucks. Pickup trucks are like the third wave of the EVs. So, based on what everybody drives out there in a pickup truck, EVs are coming later. And it's legitimate to say, no, they're not ready because two years ago they weren't. Now they are. But that's the kind of thing you discover in a community that's unique to the community. But you have to actually know who lives there and how they live. So, that's, that's a classic example of, oh, okay, we learned that from the community.
Other questions, comments? Council President Grimes.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you for the presentation. It's always nice to see that such a large portion of the focus and energy and money goes into talking to the community, reaching out, learning and sharing information. That always makes me feel great. I have a question that Josh goes back to something that you said earlier. And I'm paraphrasing, so forgive me, but you mentioned sort of the low-lying fruit options that would be available where they're easy, somewhat easy to implement or quicker to implement and not necessarily very cost-intensive. And I know that the scope of work, I think you said it was like thirteen to fifteen months long to carry out the process. Will we be able to, and I don't want to rush the process necessarily, but that's a long time to wait if there are certain things that are the low-hanging fruit that we could implement sooner than that. Would there be kind of a layered approach where we can roll into some things sooner rather than later? And then some of the larger things can, you know.
So, those things at a community scale may not go quickly. Like setting up default power to be renewable. That may not go quickly. That might take two years of administration and back and forth and legal wrangling. And especially with Sean gone, which by the way, Sean, I'm sorry, I've never met you, but clearly you're special and I'm sorry you're going. Some of that kind of stuff is not like hours or money intensive, but it might be calendar intensive, right? If we're talking an operational program, which I think is your phase two, that's the stuff you can act on like this. But I could give you the list. And in fact, when we're working on the original outline of the plan, we're going to put in the best practices that are known. Here's the thing, everybody, if you ask everybody what they want to do, it's always the same thing. It's trees and solar. And there are all these things that are known to have big scale and move quick. But people like, like those two things and they capture their imagination. So, what we have to say is here's the proven winners in the scale. What's your local version like? And there'll be a few surprises. I've shared with the management folks here on previous calls that in some communities like Lane County, the industrial emissions are negligible as a percentage of the, of the county's emission. But diesel is disproportionately huge because it's a depot center for interstate freight. Right? Bizarre, but it, it makes a difference. And some small towns that have very little footprint but have three major factories, those factories are like eighty percent of their emissions. So, we know where to look. We have to scale them and get our hands on the actual data. But I could give you a list of the best practices today and we know they'd stick. It's just we need to say, just how much should that stick versus that one? Does that make sense? Yeah, like I can tell you in almost every community, really the thing you're going after is gasoline, diesel and electricity depending on where it's generated. But that could be a small task or a huge task. And it depends on whether you're doing creative bulk buys and contracted stuff or if you're just encouraging people to buy something different. Those are very different pathways. So, so that's the details we want to get out of your community. We say, we know this bigger pattern, but we don't know the specific puzzle piece for your community. Help us figure that part out.
And I had one additional question and I'm sorry if this is sort of a foolish question, but because of the way our community is situated, we sort of straddle two big freeway systems with a lot of traffic and a lot of emissions and an enormous amount of truck traffic, especially since the Port of Portland shut down some terminals a couple of years ago. I mean, the truck traffic is insane. Do you factor that into like our total sort of pollutant pattern? And then maybe give us some suggestions how to deal with it since it's not something that we can literally change or mitigate necessarily? Is, does that factor into the report that you'll do for us?
So, so where it shows up, but it shows as a coincident pollutant is in diesel.
Okay.
Right. So, so here's the good news. The new diesel vehicles are five thousand times better. Or what, sorry, one five thousandth of the emissions of what they were in the beginning of this century. So, at the year 2000 truck and a 2022 truck has so much less toxic pollution out of the stack compared to what it used to. But they're old vehicles. There's some, not everybody's burning the cleanest fuel, et cetera. But I want to be clear, we're not dealing with air toxics except as a co-benefit of, of switching from diesel to renewable diesel, which burns cleaner, but burns cleaner on particulate, but not on nitrous oxides. So, there's a lot of nuance in there, but mostly it's greenhouse gases and it's not toxic air pollutants. The only place where you see the overlap really is in heating fuels and in diesel. And, and again, we can, we can take a little more time if you want to learn more about it. This has been one of the challenges in passing good climate legislation at the state. There's a lot of the environmental justice groups have fought this conflating greenhouse gases with toxic pollutants that are sometimes coincident and sometimes they have nothing to do with each other. So, it's because that's confusing, that's actually limited a lot of progress. So, we should take some time at some point to explain which pollutants we're dealing with. But they're the ones essentially that anyone in the world would feel the impacts from what happens in Tuolton. And Tuolton would feel the impacts from wherever they were in the world. But toxic pollutions tend to be local and they tend to be heavy and settle. Unless they, you see something like wildfire smoke drifting over into New York.
Other questions or comments? Council Brooks.
Sorry, I just had one more because you were talking about this. Now I'm confused. So, are we going to be talking about greenhouse gas emissions as well as heavy toxic pollutions that would affect, for instance, our river?
Greenhouse gas pollution is what we're focusing on.
Okay.
We're not focusing on toxics that affect human health per se, except as a happy byproduct of getting away from traditional diesel. And we're not talking about habitat or water quality per se, except in the adaptation chapter, we would talk about how stream flows are going to be about half of what they are now in 2040. And we'd be thinking about winter time flows, which are much higher. In summertime, when you have lower flows and you have stagnant water, you get algae and those kinds of things. So, that's the nexus with health is from that temperature condition. But we're not here to take out the cleaning chemicals in the community or look for the other source of toxics like wood smoke. Wood smoke is the number one air toxic pollutant in the Portland metro area. Hard to believe, followed by diesel, followed by an industrial pollutant after that. But we're not getting into those kinds of emissions. We are getting purely into the ones that force the atmosphere to hold more heat and heat up the whole planet and what happens from that.
Okay. So, if you ever did want to do something like that too, is that like phase two or?
Yeah, and, and actually, we, we ran four or five diesel emission reduction projects in the state of Oregon between 2007 and, and two, two thousand nine. And we're helping ODOT's operations look at their fleet and that transition as well. And we're also working with the state agencies to help them procure more renewable diesel, which is probably part of your pathway for your city and for some of your local freight movers.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I've just got one and it's on the definition of community and stakeholder that an adjacent community, the Stafford Hamlet, I invited myself and Mayor Walters and Buck and Lake Oswego and Wes Lynn to attend their meeting early in December, which is focused on climate, climate action plans. They're very excited to hear we're launching this and would like to very much participate, even though they're not in Tuolton, they're adjacent community, but they would like to have invitations extended to them to participate with feedback, comment, workshops. Because if you know the history over the Stafford Hamlet, they're very interested in the environment. They're very interested in agriculture and set aside. So, they'd like to participate in our plan. So, I just want to make a little note that we do that and keep those people in touch and part of this process as we move forward.
And Mayor, is that the Reach Coalition?
The what?
The Reach Coalition?
No, this is, the Borland, the Stafford Hamlet is the agricultural zone around Borland Road 205. Very farm-centric, very agricultural-centric and wanting it to stay that way despite metro and other plants. So, they are very much interested in climate action plans and the impact on agriculture and their lifestyle in Stafford, in the Stafford Hamlet. We can absolutely do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that very much should be a part of the adaptation and resilience piece.
All right.
We want food growing where it's possible.
That's their stance.
That's our stance too. After we can see what's happening to other parts of the country, we want food growing here. We do.
Any other questions? So, I have a motion. Now that this is not a public hearing, Sean.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to adopt resolution number 5590-22, awarding a contract for the climate action plan to the Good Company.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to accept and adopt resolution 5590-22, awarding a contract for the climate action plan to the Good Company. In discussion of those motions? Seeing none. Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Pratt?
Aye.
Counselor Brooks?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. It is adopted. Okay, with that, we're moving on. Congratulations, Josh and the Good Company. I can't believe no one else ever had that name registered.
I've had to fight like hell to protect it. In fact, in the last year, I've had three legal conversations about it. So, it's a beautiful name that everybody wants.
That's true. I bet. All right. Moving on to Council Communications, I believe Counselor Pratt has something she wants to discuss.
Yeah, speaking of communications, I've been to many meetings talking about tolling, especially I-205 with Clackamas County. And there's been a lot of frustration and I know the mayor's been at Washington County meetings too that we have these meetings, they come to us, we say the same things over and over and nothing gets changed and nothing's been heard or changed because of these meetings. So, and it kind of ended with the meeting Counselor Sacco and I were at. And so, there's been some communications with the other Clackamas County cities and the Hamlet just because I think it was more focused on the mitigation at the time. But that, you know, instead of having ODOT come and tell us what they want to do, that maybe we need to, as a group, to kind of take a stance and say how we feel. And, you know, kind of be a cohesive group with the other cities to let ODOT know that there's some issues here that we're concerned about and we're not feeling listened to. So, Lake Oswego reached out to our city and they had a very lengthy resolution, I would say. And it addressed a lot of issues that I don't, like it talked about. The public's not going to like this and I don't know, specific things with the RTP that were beyond, I think, what we're concerned about. So, I took this resolution and just, I took over half of it out and just kept the things I went through and I checked. Is this what we've talked about here in Tuolton? Is this our concern? Obviously, the mitigation. I know the equity of it's in there. And so, anyway, I sent the resolution out to you today. I don't know if you had a chance to read it because it was this afternoon and I apologize for that. But so, Mayor Buck has asked the Wes Lynn and Tuolton, and I'm not sure if any other cities, but I know the two of us to pass a resolution with, just so we're all making a statement together about our concerns. I don't know that it will change anything, but to me, I think it's important that we document where we're at with this and make a statement. So, anyway, I'm asking if you, anybody would be in favor of this resolution and passing it tonight? I guess it's, it's got to be written before we can adopt.
I'd say if folks are okay with it to be, you know, Sherilyn prepares it and gets it ready for her next city council meeting because we need to get it done before, again, we mentioned about Metro with J-PAC and M-PAC. So, it has some kind of impact when it gets to the folks who are supposed to read it. So, based on the plan, if we, if we say, go ahead, Sherilyn, get this drafted and get it ready for our next city council meeting, we're still going to have plenty of time to get it to the powers that be before the J-PAC and M-PAC, correct?
Yeah. And so, I'm going to just kind of summarize it. It's just saying that they, because the Abernathy Bridge does not have to be tied to tolling because they're trying to rush tolling to help cover the cost of this. They haven't used an equity framework, framework to analyze the impact of tolling. And there needs to be more coordination and looks, look at the environmental effects before they, they're, they're pushing this forward. And that they need to look at the mitigation issues before they do this. And they need to work with us and other groups. And, and that they should be tolling the whole darn thing. If they're going to toll, which is inevitable, they need to do it fairly and toll the whole loop of I-5 and 205, not just this one section. It's, the mitigation's going to be awful. So, that's the point of this really. And that, and then the last thing on it was just, I thought was really good was that the the two, the regional transportation plan update clearly define what future projects can be. the two, the regional transportation plan update clearly define what future projects can be done with tolling. So it's, right now it's this, we don't know and they're deciding as they go along and not listening to it. So that's the whole point of this.
And the, the other big debate is mitigation, in addition to mitigation diversion is what's the purpose of the tolling program? Is it for congestion relief and congestion handling or is it purely a revenue generator? And that's something they won't answer. Yeah.
No, and I, in I two oh five, I don't think you could no other alternate transportation methods that are viable. It's a little hard to believe that it's really going to reduce conjection. The congestion is just going to divert it.
Right. Council Sacco.
And Mayor, you kind of alluded to what I wanted to say is, and I don't know if it's in this document or not. I apologize. Council Pratt have had a chance to read through it in detail. But one thing that I was surprised to learn is that there is no end date. So again, is this a revenue generator or is this completing a task? And when is that task then completed? Cause it kind of feels like this open ended check, so to speak of, you know, what exactly are we using this for? Or is it to have it continue to go on and on until some undisclosed date or not even consider an end date, just doesn't feel really good to me as far as the, the purpose of it. So I don't know if that's in here or not. I don't know if Lake Oswego had it in here or not or.
Yeah. The last, the last section says the region transportation plan up page should explicitly address the question of whether road user fees may be used as a funding source for future capital projects.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah. And I, that's when I thought was really great because you're right. They've just in my, I'm kind of jaded and I think they do, you need a funding source for roads and a lot of the other stuff, we just don't get answers to questions.
So timing might be pretty good in this because Sherlin isn't ODOT coming to present on tolling our next meeting?
Not the next meeting, but February twenty eighth, the second meeting of February, ODOT will be at our work session to talk about it.
Timing wise would be perfect if we tell Cheryl to move on and draft a, you know, proclamation or a resolution here. That'll be done, completed and sent to the state. So we can follow up with the ODOT officials when they're in front of us, you know, at city council meeting, asking about these kind of questions. So see heads nodding. I think folks are in favor, Council President Grimes?
Yeah, no, I think this is a great idea to get the cities to kind of stand shoulder to shoulder and have a very cohesive position on this because I think you're absolutely right. I mean, I think it, there isn't any restrictions or parameters. I think it's, once it's installed, it's going to be there forever. And I mean, and they came flat out more than once and said that there is going to be additional congestion in our community, additional congestion of people trying to get off, avoid the tolling, get back on. And at least that I'm aware of, they never gave us a reasonable solution or any kind of plan to mitigate that for the communities. And they kind of said, they just acknowledged it was going to happen and just left it there. And yeah, I, I absolutely think this is a great idea and I apologize, Council Pratt. I haven't had a chance to go through the whole email, but yeah, no, I love the concept. I think it's a great idea. And dig our heels in and stand shoulder to shoulder and see if we can't, you know, kind of be a formidable group, all of us together and hopefully force them to, you know, be a little more forthcoming with some of the answers that we're asking for. And maybe, you know, they can also hear our concerns and, you know, maybe meet us halfway on some of these things. So I think it's great. Count me in.
And I think this, in addition to the letter, you know, coming from Clackamas County, you know, it's a one, two punch, if you will, one from the greater, you know, all of Clackamas County and one from the three cities initially impacted.
Oh, absolutely. Rock'em, sock'em, robot. Let's go.
So it looks like that's a thumbs up. Okay. All right. Any other council communications? All right. With that, I sadly will call this meeting into adjournment and say goodbye to Mr. Brady. And tomorrow's your first day or you taking some time off?
Take, take in the week and then I start next Tuesday.
All right. Well, again, congratulations and best wishes.
Yep. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
All right. So I'm assuming we're in a German, you know, all is in favor of journey. Just raise your hand. See Sean didn't catch me on that one. All right, everyone have a good evening. And again, please wear your mask, get vaccinated, wash your hands and stay socially distanced. Bye bye.